Good evening, everyone. Countdown to seven o'clock. Just about time to call this regular meeting of the Andover Inland Water Courses Commission meeting to order. I see that Commissioners Larson and Monroe are on the call, so we have a quorum for the meeting. I also note that we have a prospective member and we will have that on the agenda later in the meeting. Are there any proposed changes or additions to the agenda for the meeting? Seeing that, I'll proceed to approval of the minutes from our September 13th, 2022 regular meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes which were so thoughtfully prepared by our agent Joe Wagner, who still seems to be acting in lieu of a regular board clerk?
I have no comments.
Okay. Bill, have you reviewed those?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Then in that case, I'll move to approve those minutes without correction. I have a second for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, so moving second to approve the minutes. Roll call Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
And I also wrote aye, so the motion carries three zero zero. Next on the agenda would be an opportunity for a public comment. Members of the public who may wish to ask questions or find out about any items on our agenda. By the way, Jan is our prospective member. Normally, we would restrict the public comment or non-member participation to this section of the agenda. But since you're interested in being on the commission, if there are questions that arise during the discussion, feel free to raise them so that you can follow the thread of the meeting more readily. Okay?
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
Thanks.
Then we'll move on to old business, the first of which is IWWC 22 number 2011. The application from the Andover Lake Management Association to remove aquatic vegetation in the South Cove of Andover Lake using a hydro brick. I don't see any representative of Andover Lake Management Association on the call. Joe, have you heard anything from Jeff Hayes?
I had heard that. I'm looking it up now. He sent me an email last week that said he wasn't going to be here. He was actually out of the country.
Okay. I guess that's an excuse for not joining the Zoom meeting.
He said somebody was going to attend in his place. But I guess they're not here.
Okay, I know that they were, of course, anxious to get approval so that they could begin the work about now. They wanted, I recall from the last meeting, that they wanted to do this before the drawdown.
Oh, it looks like Mr. Kevin Regan is on the call and he's one of the people that.
Okay. Mr. Regan, are you representing Alma for the, in regard to the application for vegetation removal?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I will ask then if there are any questions from Commissioners regarding the application. First, Commissioner Larson, I know you weren't here at the last meeting, so you may need a little more depth of background fill or backfill to consider the application.
Nope, I looked through the minutes and am all in favor of trying to do what we can to preserve the life of the lake.
Okay, Commissioner Monroe.
I think my questions were answered at the last meeting. Basically, he made a good point. Just rake that stuff out of there and pull it up by the roots and not going to spread around the whole lake because it's so shallow, the overflow will just go right back into the bottom of the lake.
Right.
Like.
Because the characteristics of the South Cove.
Yeah. Down in there anyway, so that's where they're going to be working, was my understanding on that.
I had, one thought occurred to me subsequent to the meeting, I wasn't able to raise it then, and it didn't seem to be addressed in any of the correspondence, and that is how the contractor will make sure that nothing, that there's no baggage with the equipment. In other words, the equipment has to be sanitized to prevent spread of aquatic organisms from any previous use. I mean, you'd hate to pull out water wheels and get water wheel instead.
It's my understanding that the equipment is thoroughly washed with bleach prior to use at each location.
Okay. So that I assume that there was probably something, but I wanted on record that that would be part of the plan.
Yeah, this is, this is the only business they're in, so it's, it's something they have to do whenever they go to a new location.
Yeah. Okay, so are there any, if there are no further questions or comments, I believe that we could vote on approval of the application. I would like a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve the inland wetlands application 22-11 for Andover Lake.
Okay, and.
I will second that.
Okay, so moving seconded, any thought, I mean, most of our, many of our standard conditions won't exactly apply to this activity. Are there any special conditions that we want to attach to this permit? I haven't been able to think of anything. Agent Wagner, do you have any suggestions or recommendations regarding to conditions for the application?
Not that I can think of. I think a lot of the stuff I had concerns about or was added to the, to the application.
Yeah, part of the record in terms of the email exchange.
Yeah. So yeah, I didn't see anything.
Okay, any further discussion then? Okay, seeing that, I'll ask for a vote on the application. Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so the motion carries three zero zero. Agent Wagner will notify Alma of the permit approval and since we doubt that there will be any further need for consideration, Alma can probably work with the contractor to schedule the work at earliest convenience.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Then we will move on to IWWC 2212, a proposal for Lot 22 Lake Road by Mr. Mark Reynolds, the engineer, and Judy Connolly, the property owner. I see that a representative of the engineering firm and the applicant are on the call. Yeah, I noticed that we just received, I hope that the other commissioners also received an update to the plan. Okay, Commissioner Monroe received that. Commissioner Larson, did you receive the updated site plan?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. Since it is new, I'd like the engineer to just walk us through the significant changes, what has been added, and what we should be aware of in that new site plan.
Sure. Can you hear me okay, George?
Yeah, I can hear you. If you want to share a screen, work that out with.
Yep, yep, that would be perfect.
It should, it should be set up for you to share now if you want.
Does it work right now? Can you see my screen?
Okay.
So my name is Jason, Jason Reynolds. I'm presenting this application tonight. Mark was double booked, so you guys get me in. So I'll just go through this couple slides briefly here. This is the site. We're on the east side of Andover Lake. Small, roughly two acre parcel. It's on the other side of the road here for the lake. The slide that I think you've mostly all seen before, the rough layout, the house, the set take, everything like that. The next one has a little more detail.
Excuse me, Jason, just a moment. I'm getting some echo feedback here, and I wonder if anybody else has, has not muted their mic. We may be getting a little feedback. So please make sure that your mics are all muted during the. So go ahead, Jason. I'll mute myself now.
All right, so I'll continue. On this slide here, you can see the wetlands off the left in yellow, the yellow we had over here. Proposed rain garden, this kind of dark oval we have over here. See the house, the driveway, all the runoff flowing overland to the rain garden. Where the new stuff starts to come in. So we have incorporated the detail here for the driveway culvert into the site plan. It's just a blow up here so you can see it larger. We're proposing a 20 foot long, 15 inch HGP, relatively flat, 3.3% slope, flare dance section with modified rip rap at either end. So that's just cutting right here through the driveway. That detail has been incorporated into the site development plan. It's a, of a screen grab from the site plan, the new revised one. I'll show you some key elements here, a little bit larger view. All of the dark heavy dashed line, this is the silt fence around the rain garden, around the limits of our disturbance here. One of the questions, one of the comments was to incorporate the proposed clearing limits. So proposed clearing limits have been added, the detail for the culvert crossing, all the ENS controls around the site, and on the high side of the plan, details for the rain garden, everything else that we had comments on, incorporate that into the new site plan. So that's all ready to roll. I'm going to leave you with slide. That's a good one to have up. If anybody has any questions, just let me know. If you want me to continue to share the screen and if you have questions for me, just ask away.
Okay, any questions from the Commissioners?
I had one question. When you talked about the culvert, you used an abbreviation, I think it was HDPE, and on the, the plan, it talks about an RCP, and I wasn't familiar with either of those. Is this the corrugated, heavy duty plastic piping that you're putting in there?
Yeah, so we're proposing the HGP is a high density polyethylene. It says RCP on one of those notes. That's, that's an error. It's not going to be RCP. It's going to be HGP.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Monroe, any questions about the application or? Okay. And I believe all my questions have been addressed and I appreciate the update of the plan that reflects the discussion at the last meeting. I think we could move to approve this application with standard conditions, and I think that I think we should also incorporate the special conditions that were attached to the permit in 2005. Hold on a second here. That was part of the record online. But it did include, you know, in addition to the typical conditions regarding erosion control and so on, as far as, since the removal and planting of vegetation is part of the site plan, the conditions should certainly include prior approval of the planting design and inspection of the plantings both after planting and after at least a year in order to make sure that they've become established. I don't know when the work is going to be done, but it's never certain that the conditions will be optimal for planting. And very often, of course, the landscaping is the last thought and the how shall I say, most readily overlooked component of a site design. So again, I want to make sure that those conditions are included in the permit approval. So if I could have a motion to the, to that effect.
I'll make a motion to approve inland wetlands water course commission permit 22-12 for the lot on 22 Lake Road.
With standard and additional conditions as in the 2005.
The standard and additional conditions as per the 2005 letter.
Okay, good. A second for that motion?
I second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I did have one, one question or comment, and that is when I looked through the approved conditions from the 2005 letter, there's, there are several inspections noted in there. And I wasn't sure if that, those were inspections that our agent was going to do, our, our engineer was going to do, or we're relying on somebody else for those. But I think you know, we should have an understanding of what the inspections are that, that our agent or engineer are going to do with respect to the building line.
Quite well taken. Okay, some of these conditions, of course, would be our own agent, a planting plan and inspection of plantings would be, I think, in our purview. Other references to engineers, I think would be a negotiation between the wetlands agent and the engineer of record for the project. For example, the, one of the special conditions about dewater. Well, if you're trying to put up a culvert in a flood, I'd say wait, but you know, those kinds of things, I think are, most of those seem to be referring to the project engineer, not a town engineer. The others refer to an agent, which would be our agent.
So item three, for instance, talks about the silt fence to be inspected prior to the start of work. That should be by our.
Our agent, right. Agent Wagner, you would typically, that would typically be part of your standard procedure, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay, is that sufficient clarification on that?
It is for me. I just know that we've, you know, not had all the inspections. We've struggled to get some inspections done on a couple of things. You know, I'm not necessarily pointing that at the wetlands, but there's other applications where we've, we've had a hard time coordinating with the people who are actually doing the work to allow, allow the town the opportunity to come in and make the inspections that they need to do.
Very well taken.
The, the other question I have is just, you know, we've probably covered last month when I wasn't here. When do we expect the work to start in the wetlands?
That would be a question for the engineer.
I, I think that the, the goal was to get the crossings done first. I'm not sure if Don is still thinking of breaking ground this year. I believe that was his intention, was to get the culvert all squared away first. I'd have to double check with the contractor to be honest.
Okay, because I would think that, you know, and again, it's a, an engineering thing, but under our purview, if we don't get that done within the next couple of months, you know, then you get into the rainy spring and all that, and you're almost precluded from doing that until next summer. So if the, the property owners wanted to get started on, on the building, it's imperative that they get that in there before, before much longer here when things get wet.
Yeah, I believe that was the intention of the contractor. I will double check, but I think that's what he would like to do is get moving on as quickly as possible.
Okay, any further comments, Commissioner Monroe?
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
I'd like to make one more comment, Chairman Elliott. And that's just, I alluded to it before, but we've struggled on a couple of applications that are both wetlands and planning and zoning as well as just planning and zoning where, you know, we spent time. I think this is a, an excellent plan. I was really happy with the quality of the, the site plan that we have here and what we needed to address. What I've seen in some cases is that plan is never shared with the guy who's actually doing the work. And the, we've seen that with the clearing areas and, you know, other things like that. And so I'd just like to make sure that we've got this excellent plan. I'd like it to share, be shared with the guys who are doing the work.
Okay, if that concludes the discussion, I think we can proceed with a vote on the motion by roll call. Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Monroe.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so the motion to approve the permit with, again, standard conditions and special conditions as per the 2005 permit approval passes unanimously. And again, encourage the engineer to work with our agent to get the project underway.
Excellent. Thank you, George. Commission, thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good. And you are, of course, excused from the meeting at this point. Yeah, thanks for your contribution. So moving on, that takes care of our old business. Everything pending. We don't have any new business, no new applications. But I believe we do have some information regarding previous. We asked at the last meeting, Commissioner Monroe particularly asked for an update on the project at nominally 20, on Pine Ridge Road, 26 Old Farms Road, or the driveway construction utilities and so forth. So that's on the agenda. And of course, if there are other issues that have come up, that would also be part of the deal. So Agent Wagner, hand that over to you.
Yeah, I have, let's see, figure out how to share it. I took some pictures last week. And then I put a packet together with with the pictures from that and from, let's see, from the rest of them. They're on the website. I don't know if I sent them to you guys or not, but they're free of view, and I got them up on my screen now. I don't know if you can see them.
Go, yeah.
So this is, we'll start with the, I think we're starting with the ones from recent times, which is this one here. I put some captions on the bottom. So this is looking, this is like standing at the Wetlands Crossing, looking towards Pine Ridge Drive. So that area from the crossing up to the road, when I went last week on the 27th. It was pretty much graded. It was seeded, looked pretty stable in that area. So let's go down to this one. This is looking at the downstream side of the open bottom culvert, looking up towards Pine Ridge Drive. So that would be up in the top, Pine Ridge Drive would be up on the top left corner up here. So that's that one.
Joe, do you know what those greenish pipe things are that you see sticking out on the sides there?
Um, I'm not sure if they're, see if they're going through over here. Yeah, it looks like they're, it looks like I can barely see them there. I'll have to ask, I'm not sure what they are, honestly. I'll have to ask George what they are. They might be chains for the road. I don't know. So yeah, I'll make a note to ask him. As I want to talk to him about putting more silt fence in. So this is another, another view of the open bottom culvert, the rip rap on the end. So yeah, you can get an idea how, how it looks. So let's see, I took it the same day. Here's another view. This one goes back to the beginning of September. So this was before it was seeded. So there's a view of the open bottom one in the foreground, and then in the background is the, the round culvert. And then you can see, I think you can see at the time he was working on putting the utilities in on the side. Which is, yeah, up in the background. And then here's another view of the round culvert that was back in August 22nd, when it was really dry. You can see the soil there, but that's the round bottom one with the partially buried. Again, has those green pipes. And then there's another picture from August of the open bottom one in progress. And then this is back in July, mid-July. When they were building the forms for the open bottom culvert. So you can see how they had to excavate, excavate to put the forms in pretty deep, but they're actually able to leave in the center here. They're able to leave the stream bottom in that part, so that kind of maintained the, the level. So they left that and then just filled it in, into that level. So that's all original stream bed in the center and the rest is filled in. So they left that and then just filled it in, into that level. So that's all original stream bed in the center and the rest is filled in. But at least they could do it. When they did it that way, it was, it was easier to maintain the, uh, the existing stream contours and grade. And then this was previous, this was before the crossing was built. So that was, uh, July sixth. So that was after tree clearing and then when they, uh, leveled up. Site prior to placing all the blocks and everything. And, uh, yeah, that's it. So if you have any questions on it.
Okay, I, I had one question, Agent Wagner. Vegetation removal was of course a condition of the permit. Uh, were you able to, uh, document that? Part of the work being done?
Um, no, I haven't. I've been kind of focused on the crossing right now. I can, uh, I can ask them if they've started that.
Yeah, check on that, your, your next, uh, opportunity. Uh, because again, it was important to get that work going, uh, because it's gonna be, uh, you know, a multi-year. Uh, well, at least two years, uh, of follow-up on that. Uh, in terms of, you know, initial removal and then, uh, a cleanup removal, because this is principally barberry. And then, uh, you know, uh, planting at the earliest opportunity, uh, to get the new shrubbery. Uh, established. So.
Yeah, I believe that was, I think the condition was that they had to start it. They had to start the removal for completion of the house. If I'm, if I'm not, I, I think that was.
Right, the, the, I, I realize that the condition may have given them some leeway, but at the same time.
Yeah.
Uh, as, as our agent, uh, and, and the person, uh, you know, who's, uh, got the direct, uh. View of what's going on. I, I'd like you to encourage them to.
Yeah.
Move on that.
Yeah, sooner the better. So, yeah, I'll do that.
Can you go back to the, uh, the picture that you took that showed the stream bed in the center of the two, uh, forms?
Uh, yeah, that's one.
Yes, then one of the, so one of the things that I know, you know, when we were talking about, uh, going to this. Pouring onsite versus the, uh, the, bringing in the, uh, pre-cast. Culvert was, it was advertised as being all done in a single pour. And I didn't know if you got any feel for how they poured the center span between those two things to keep it, uh. You know, elevated, uh, up over the stream bed, uh. Or if that just wasn't going on when you were out there.
Yeah, I wasn't, uh, I didn't get to see that part. Um. I was actually out, I think this day I was there with George, the, um, Korea. And he was telling me about this one. I don't remember what he. Said this is second piece. I think that was, uh, yeah, I don't know. It looks like it would have to be two separate things, but. Like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't there for that.
It, it looks like it was a pretty massive engineering project.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the end result, I mean, it looks like it was pretty. Looks like it went pretty well. At the end, um, was happy that they were able to kind of maintain the, I was, I was a little worried about, um, being able to maintain the, you know, proper. Stream bed level. So it was nice to see that they didn't have to excavate the whole thing. Yeah.
Okay, uh, well, any, uh, any other questions or comments on, you know, again, following up on this. Fairly significant project.
George, I just have one, just thank you, uh, Joe for getting those photographs to us. Let us know what's going on out there.
Yeah, no problem. This was a, a bigger project for, it seemed like a bigger one for the commission. So I figured I, I'm kind of keeping an eye on it. I usually go there once a week and I take some pictures for the record to note the progress and. Um. There's some issues with, uh, erosion on the other side. Now it's starting to get, um. Get back into a rainy season. It's actually raining now. So, uh, you know. So I had, um, I had emailed the applicant, um. Last week, I think, asking him to put some silt fence in. So I have to go back there and check and, and see if he did.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, you know, just agree with, uh, what Commissioner Monroe was saying. The photos are great. It is certainly, uh, much more significant than I was expecting, uh, to see. And, and it's nice to see the end product, well, close to the end product anyhow, but, uh, that, that's a pretty massive structure.
Yeah.
That it is indeed. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, I had one question, Agent Wagner, at the last meeting. Uh, you mentioned, uh, that, uh, the owner of Andover Auto Parts, the property. Uh, had, um. Said that tires and wheels, I guess, you know, spare parts that had gotten removed from a wetland. Uh, from the Ronald Pool area, uh, were you able to, to, uh, check on that, verify or?
Uh, I haven't yet. I think, uh. I think Jim was over there, but yeah, I don't know. I doubt he looked at it either because it's not his. Area of concern. So, yeah, I haven't yet.
Okay.
If you'd like me to, I, I'll, I'll try, I'll contact them and try and go over there.
Yeah, see if you can, see if you can work that out, you know.
Okay.
Not, not a huge concern, but again, it's always good to follow up. Uh, and, you know, because if they just pulled the tires off to the side, that's one thing. If they entirely remove them, that's another thing. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I did spend some time over there with Jim within the last week or so and, uh. You know, when, when you talk about a project that. Has a plan and the plan's not followed, you know, we. A year ago, we were talking about, uh, you know, how the whole excavation plan was not in accordance with the plan we all. Went out and agreed to. Um, and then we, uh, you worked very hard to get, uh, a restoration plan where. Uh, both, uh, Chairman Elliott, uh, and Agent Wagner, uh, were out there with us going through that. We, we came through, came up with, uh, what we thought was a good, uh. Restoration plan and, uh. You know, they were supposed to get ahold of, uh, Jim a couple of, you know, forty-eight hours before starting any work. Uh, it was running late. Next thing we know, they're out there going on. Jim had no idea that the work was started. It's not, uh, it's not graded in accordance with the plan that we came up with, uh. You know, so we have, uh, really struggled, you know, we went out and talked to the guy who's doing the work. And he said he didn't know anything about plan. He was just told to go out and spread the dirt around. And so, uh, you know, uh, we've, uh. We're continuing to struggle to, uh, to get that to a satisfactory finish line, but, uh. Um, that, that's the classic example in my mind where. You know, both commissions worked very hard to come up with a good plan and then, uh, yeah, we, we paid no attention to it. So, uh, that's, uh, I know that's not what any of us were looking for.
Certainly not. And you're right, there was, uh. Obviously a lot of, uh, problems with the excavation to begin with, uh. Both from a point of view of communication with the relevant boards. Uh, but also evidently the land over himself. Uh, and, you know, abrogating responsibilities, you know, the contractor. Uh, not doing what even the landlord expected, much less what the commission's expected. So, yeah, that's, it was, uh. A good object lesson for us and a reminder of the need to provide for. Adequate follow-up. But unfortunately, there's very little we can do. Once, you know, once the contractor is there and pushing dirt around, as you say. Uh, it's. Difficult to back up and. Restart to get it done right.
Well, there was a, there was a pile of, uh, you know, tree stumps, some old tires and that laying around, uh, just, uh, you know, by the edge of the property. Would be the western side over, uh, you'll buy, uh, back by the auto parts place there. And, you know, I think they're just gonna have to, uh, you know, we're gonna have to go in and, and have it, uh, regraded, uh, you know, we, uh. We ended up, uh, agreeing that, uh, it would kind of form like a detention basin with a low spot in the center. And right now, the, uh, the. It appears to me that, uh, you have the, the grading slope towards Catherine Hutchinson's, uh, property. And, and I know that, uh, she won't, uh. Stand for that. Uh, there'll be plenty that we will hear before that's all said and done. So, uh. We've, we're gonna have to, uh, do some work on that one over with planning and zoning.
Wonder if in the future, we could look into, uh, like certain applications requiring a bond. Um, and part of the approval pass process to kind of give a little more motivation to the. To the applicant to do it according to the plan, uh, in order to get their bond money back. Might be something to consider with.
Well, and there was supposed to have been a bond, uh, on that project.
Yeah.
Whether or not it actually got done, you know, we'll have to check where we stand on that.
Like specific to, to a wetlands application, I guess. What I was thinking about in the future.
That's a good point. And, you know, obviously we have provisions in the regulations and bylaws to do that. Uh, it's just never arisen as a condition as long as I've been on the commission. And I don't know. Uh, you know, when the last time it actually occurred, that would have been, you know, sometime in one of your predecessors.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not real familiar with the whole, with the process. So I would have to, would have to make sure he did it right if we're going to do it at all. That it would actually work, we wanted it to.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's legal obligations all around when you get into that kind of situation. Okay, well, uh, further discussion on agent activities, agent report.
I, uh, I had one other comment, uh, I guess, and, and it, uh. It has to do with the online, I think it's an online application for our permits now. And, uh, when I, you know, I looked, uh, at the permit for the lot, uh, your twenty-two lot on Lake Road. And, uh. My first cut was, wow, this is, this is pretty nice. This is, this is pretty, uh, easy and straightforward for the applicant to fill out. And then I went back, uh, and looked at our regulations and what our regulations require with respect to an application. And there seems to be a significant disconnect. You know, our. Our regulations have like six pages of requirements for what needs to be in the application. And when it's not there, that makes it very difficult for the applicant to provide to the commission. What, uh, what we need to see. So I wasn't convinced that, uh, while it makes it easier for the applicant, easier to get filed maybe. I don't think it, uh, makes it easier for the commission to review it.
That's, uh, an important point you've raised, Commissioner Larson. Uh, and I think it would be helpful. Not necessarily for discussion right at the moment, but certainly for, uh, further consideration, review. Uh, perhaps at our next meeting, if you could, um. Enumerate some of those, uh, some of the disconnects. I'll take a look at it myself as well. Uh, and, you know, if we can all put our heads together on that, I think it would be helpful to. See what, uh, what might be added, uh, to the online application form. Uh, if there's, uh, you know, if there's information that we're not getting.
Yeah, I was looking, I looked at section seven of our regulations, which I think are the applications starting on page thirteen. The, and, and a lot of the stuff is very easy. There might be some stuff in the regulations that we say, oh, that, uh. Not necessary or something. Well, then, you know, it ought to not be in the regulations.
I think, um, some of that stuff I tried to address because it was, um. I, yeah, I mean, the, the online application form was pretty, pretty limited. Um, with what you can do for, I think, honestly, I think the program was kind of designed more for building permits. And then they added on this zoning and wetlands thing. Um, there's been some issues with, uh, like the Andover Lake application. Um. Like when the, when you go to permit link to fill out the application, there's, um. There's a spot where you have to, you know, you have to start, you have to click an address and Andover Lake doesn't have an address. So you can't really do it into the program. So I, I had made a separate PDF copy. For ones like that, you can see on that, on the online, that one's filled out by hand for that reason. Um, and then to account for all the stuff that's in the application requirements, like you said, Jed, because, um. Yeah, you need a site plan, you need drawings, you need statements of this and that. Um, I put on the town website. So you click on apply for a permit. I think it's apply for a wetlands permit. And then there's a big write-up of. What you need to provide along with the application. Um, so you scroll through that and then at the bottom of that, you get to the. Actual link where you can go into permit link and do it. So hopefully, an applicant reads all the requirements. Um, when to submit it, what to, what to put in there. Um, and all that kind of stuff before they actually start the whole process.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look, uh, at that too. I just.
Yeah, yeah, take a look please and then let me know if you need, you know, if it, it's hard because I wrote it, um, you know, sometimes it's hard to. See if it makes a lot of sense, but yeah, do you have any feedback?
But sometimes we're trying to, you know, put the round peg into a square hole and, uh, you know, as you mentioned, we probably. Piggybacked on the building application there, um. But, you know, in. I saw a lot of the information that the application had to have on the site plan, you know, like the big write-up on. The erosion and sediment controls and all that kind of stuff. But what, uh, I, I do think it's important that we have. Written down, you know, in writing, all the, uh, all the things that the application. Needs to have and some of it can be in the site plan. I know back, uh, you know, probably just before you were getting here. We were trying to upgrade the checklist that we use to make sure that the application covered all the stuff. And so now instead of making the application bigger to include all those things on the checklist, we made the application shorter. And so, you know, we, it, uh. It just doesn't seem, it seems to be a disconnect more than, more than we should have. And I think we're seeing by the fact that, um, property owners often don't. You know, we come up with a good plan and then, uh, you know, it, the execution is, uh. You know, there's a wide spectrum of, of how well the plan is followed in execution. So the more detail we can actually have and what we agree to. Uh, the better off we are. Another example of that is, uh, you know, when we had the, the sandy beach on the lake over. I guess it was Three Lakeside Drive and, uh, you know, we, we had some detail in the plan on. Restoring the previous beach area, you know, and, and the property owner didn't have. Any intention of doing that. You went back over and said, hey, it's here in the plan. You know, this is what you agreed to. And, and we were able to, uh, you know, get him to do that at that point. So I think, uh, the more detail. That we have, the better in trying to, uh, end up with what we think we ought to get.
Yeah, for sure. That's why I was trying. Yeah, for sure. That's why I was trying, like, the hard. Thing to do is to get, you know, all that information out so that people actually look at it before they start with the application. Because, I mean, the whole process that kind of starts long before you. Fill out the the initial application, the coming up with. You know, a good plan.
Yep. Well, we start with the applicant having to read the regulations, you know. Then here's what needs to be in the application. That would be a good place for him to start.
It seems like we can't have everything possible in the application. But at the same time, I think that, you know, if if especially with an online form. Uh, that's provided by some other vendor and you're not writing the code and. You know, so you can't really modify it, but I think that the approach that's being taken by Agent Wagner, namely. A lot of essentially prefatory material. Here's what you need to know before you get going with this. And here's what else you may have to do besides what's in the application is the only way that we can actually ensure. Uh, that we get those materials. So there may not be a part of the application form per se. That is the online application form, but, you know, how shall I say, required supplemental materials or. Large fields for comments, you know, where people can provide that information. Even though it may not be, you know, again. Incorporated in the online form. But, you know, I think particularly, Commissioner Larson, your point about reviving that checklist. Uh, making sure that, you know, that that we are in fact. Requiring that information upfront. In the application process.
Yep. It it even, you know, we will never get to the point where everything's there, but. I am surprised how often I have. A vision of what I will expect to see when everything's done. And how often what I see is different than what I thought it was. And so, you know. I just try to come up with enough. Restrictions or conditions or whatever that at the end of the day, surprises are kept to a minimum.
Indeed. Okay, any other questions or comments for the agent for agent report?
Um, nothing. Nothing here, no, no new approvals. Then, yeah. Nothing, nothing big.
Uh, then we can move on to item number nine, other business and commission vacancy. I'm pleased. That we do have a person of interest. There, Janice and Janice, if you would kindly give me the phonetics. Of the pronunciation of your last name.
It's really very easy. It's just mashy.
Mashy?
Yep, mashy like mashed mashed potatoes.
Okay. So, anyhow, Genesis has expressed interest. In joining the commission, contacted Agent Wagner and there's been subsequent follow up. I believe I. Circulated the the letter that she. Emailed to commission to Agent Wagner and, you know, again, I distributed that. Uh, and I would invite you, Janice, if you'd like to speak to the commission about your interest in joining our work.
Sure, a little unplanned, but sure. Basically, I've been a resident of Andover for four and a half years. Prior to that, I was in Columbia for eighteen years. My background. Is I owned, I was the owner broker of Carriage Barn Realty on Route Six. Uh, for fifteen years. So, um, I have a little bit of. You know, real estate background and my other jobs were in banking, so little of both. Um, loved real estate, though. Uh, I've recently retired. Uh, so I was looking for something to do. I had actually seen the ad in the paper for the. Um, ZBA opening. And when I went to that meeting, I believe it's Bill Monroe. Um, asked me if I'd have any interest in joining the Wetlands Committee. So, sure. I mean, I have, I certainly have background. Being in in real estate for fifteen years, I had my share of. Uh, meeting with some of your committees, you know, in various towns because of. You know, wetlands issues or water or, you know, so I have. Some background. Based on what I've heard tonight, I'm sure I have a lot to learn. Um, but I definitely have an interest in in doing something, something for the town, something for. You know, the community, just something I can help with. So, um, if you guys are interested, I would be interested.
Well, I can definitely state that we are very much interested in filling out our numbers. And having someone with experience from the other side, as it were. But at least you 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 know what we're about. We're a regulatory commission. There are, you know. Statutory obligations that we have to fulfill and make sure that. When development or construction or any kind of activities that impact wetlands, that they're. Uh, if they require a permit and that they're properly presented and that the. To the best of our ability to make sure that the regulations are are followed. Uh, I would say that. The. Connecticut Department of Environmental and Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Uh, has put together a training. Online trainings, modules for wetland agencies, I.
And I did start that.
Yeah, okay, you started looking that good. So that's extremely valuable in in getting a sense. Uh, of, you know, what wetlands are and what the, you know, the general tenor of the regulations. Of course, our regulations and and bylaws are online and. Well, I think there would be. Heroic, to say the least, to get thoroughly acquainted with the regulations, at least having a a broad overview of what the regulations cover. Uh, and, you know, knowing that. Certain kinds of activities maybe may require permits and that others. Uh, are permitted as of rights, so on and so forth. Getting familiar with those, you know, it 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 does take time. Uh, and. I don't think that it's reasonable to expect any commissioner, even the chairman of the commission, to. Know those regulations in detail by heart. But, you know, we can always have them online or at hand during the meetings. I think one of our commissioners liked to have a booklet nearby with the regulations. As that.
This one?
Yeah, that one, exactly.
But I think as long as you know where to find them, I mean, that's what's important.
Yeah, that's that's exactly the level of question you need. So if you're, if you are interested. Uh, in joining the commission, I I'll point out to the to the commissioners that, you know, under the. Under the conditions is the town charter, section, I've got it up here, section six oh three. Dealing with vacancies on appointed. Commissions since, you know, the, I guess. ZBAs officially elected. Commission, we are an appointed commission. Normally, our. Uh, our appointments are through the Board of Selectment. However, in the case of a vacancy. The commission itself is responsible for filling the vacancy. So basically, all we have to do is vote to say, we want to appoint you to the commission. And then I will notify the Board of Selectment of the appointment and, of course, the town clerk. You will have to be sworn in by the town clerk at your convenience.
I was sworn in today for the ZBA.
Okay, well, you know what what happens, right?
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty quick and painless. It's not like an inauguration, okay? No bibles involved or other sacred texts. Okay, so I will, I would entertain a motion then to appoint. Uh, Janice Mashkey to the inland wetlands and water courses commission for a term. Uh, beginning with to be seated at our next meeting and continuing through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty three.
So moved?
Okay, Commissioner Monroe moved, or who moved? You moved, okay. And a second then. But one or the other.
Yeah, I'll second then.
Okay, and I'll again, a roll call vote, Commissioner Larson.
I.
Commissioner Monroe. And I also vote aye, so the motion carries three zero zero. Congratulations, Janice, and we welcome you to and look forward to. Uh, working with you. In the future, again.
Thank you very much.
Mention. Now, our next meeting. Is supposed to be Monday, November seventh. The commission meets ordinarily, of course, the first Monday of every month, unless there's a holiday. Uh, on or adjacent to that date. Unfortunately, I've got a conflict for that date. And per kind of informal agreement, we would either have to cancel. Uh, well, we'd have to cancel that meeting and what I'm looking at is the possibility of rescheduling a special meeting. Uh, as soon as possible thereafter, so that if any business does arise. Right now, we don't have anything on the agenda. Uh, but if. If there's an application that needs commission attention. Between now and the. Last week of October, really. It would be good to have a meeting to attend it, to to take care of it. You know, when we receive an application, we need to get it on the record. As soon as possible and start start the ball rolling. Uh, because there are deadlines. So I propose that we can meet, well, Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month is our usual fallback. But in this case, the second Tuesday of November is election day. So that's not such a good idea. Uh, that puts us with either Wednesday or Thursday. I'm free on both of those dates. Commissioner Monroe got back to me and said that he was free. For both of those dates. So I'll ask Commissioner Larson and the new commissioner Mashkey to. Look at their calendars and, of course, Agent Wagner, to see if either the eighth, I'm sorry, either the. Ninth or tenth. Of November. Are available.
Both of those days work for me.
Okay.
I think. Ninth would be better for me because I actually have. Wyndham, our Wyndham Wetland Commission meets on the tenth.
Okay.
I don't know if we'll have a meeting or not, but.
Okay, well, we wouldn't want to preclude that by any means. Okay, so, Josh, would the ninth work for you?
That would be fine.
Okay, so. Then we will cancel the regular meeting for the seventh. And Joe, just go ahead and pencil in, you have a pencil in a special meeting. For the ninth.
And I ask, like, if you had no. Business, would you still have the meeting or would you just cancel it?
We could probably just cancel the meeting in that case. You know, if. If if there's, especially if there's no new business. Um, there's nothing else pressing for the commission to deal with, so. I don't think we would lose anything by skipping a date. I think ZBA tends to work on the same principle.
Yeah, that's what they said, too. Thanks.
Okay, so we're so then we're on for. On for November ninth. And that concludes the business of our agenda. So without objection. We can consider the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for. Being here and I'll look forward to seeing you again in a month. You can now press the little red leave button on your Zoom screen and. Our agent slash clerk can press the end meeting button that says is at his disposal. Thanks again. Have a great rest of the.
Welcome, Jan.
Thanks. Thanks. I'll talk to you soon.
Righto.
Bye.